You're late.
Hi.
Seriously?
Thirty-four seconds.
It's so a shame.
All right, are we ready?
Yep.
Good evening and welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The floor will be open to the audience for twenty minutes to address the City Council on matters that are on the agenda after the City Council discusses with staff. We ask that persons wishing to address the City Council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the Council as a whole through the mayor and profanity may not be used in any form. Our first thing on the agenda is low-speed electric scooter discussion, which I'll just refer to Jeopardy-- whoops, not Jeopardy. Deputy Chief Tony Peluso.
Who's good at Jeopardy.
New title.
Thank you for the invite.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good?
Good.
Okay, Council, thank you for having me. I appreciate you having me here. I am Tony Peluso. For those of you who haven't met me, I'm the relatively new deputy chief here at the police department. I am here to present to you the topic of electronic or low-speed electric scooters, which I'll refer to as e-scooters, if that's okay with you. So I'll go over a few topics. I'll try to keep it brief. I will go over the definition of electric scooters and some restrictions, some hour regulations on scooters, and then outside, there we go, outside jurisdiction scooter regulations as well as our crash data. Okay, so we recently learned from the Illinois Municipal League in January of a recent passage of a amendment to the Illinois Vehicle Code in regard to e-scooters. In August of twenty-four, legislation was enacted to permit municipalities to authorize the use of e-scooters within their jurisdictions. However, the use of, or these scooters are limited to e-scooters that are, have a maximum speed of ten miles per hour and to be used on public ways within the municipalities. If the municipality were to enact an ordinance to regulate these scooters, they would be authorized on any public ways within the municipality. It was also targeted toward forest preserve districts, park districts, conservation districts, but this obviously would only apply to the municipality here. If the municipality chose not to enact an ordinance, they would remain banned, much like they are now on public ways. One interesting point that was brought up by the Illinois Municipal League was if an ordinance was enacted to regulate the use of these e-scooters, there might be some liability exposure to the municipality. I can't speak to that topic, but that is something that will be important to discuss. So, starting with the definition, I think everybody has seen these scooters and they're very prevalent out, out and about these days, but it's defined as a device weighing less than a hundred pounds with two or three wheels, handlebars and a floorboard that can be stood upon while riding that is powered by an electric motor and human power with a maximum speed of ten miles per hour. It's not a moped or motor-driven cycle. I won't read off every one of these restrictions, but there are some restrictions that are, that specifically state that the electric scooters cannot be used on streets or highways where the speed limit exceeds thirty-five miles an hour. There are age restrictions. The rider must be eighteen or older, and there are parking restrictions. There are light specifications. You have to have much like bicycles, and there not should be, there should not be any more than one person on the scooter. They should not be equipped with sirens unless they're used by us, which we don't. They must have brakes and... They cannot be used on any state highways. They must be maintained in good condition as well. Currently, the Rolling Meadows ordinance states that no scooters, minibikes, pocket bikes, anything like that can be used on any public streets, sidewalks, lots, bike paths, anything owned by the city, anything considered public property. We examined some crash data. There is not a lot of crash data available that specifically relates to scooters. So the most similar thing that we had would be bicycles, and I just looked back for twenty-three and twenty-four, relatively low number thankfully. In two thousand and twenty-three, there were three total incidents, one with property damage only and two with minor injuries. Last year unfortunately, there was one, this was involving an e-bike, that involved a fatality, and then there was one, one incident with a minor injury and two incidents with just property damage. I examined some of the scooter regulations for just some local outside jurisdictions. It seems as though these jurisdictions are in the same boat as we are. They recently just learned of the passage of this statute and many have not taken action yet. Some don't have anything in the hopper just yet. They're still looking into it like we are, hoping it for discussion, so there's no action on the horizon. You'll see here that these five, they ban these type of devices on their public ways. So just some of the points to consider. This regulation only pertains to scooters that have a maximum speed of ten miles per hour. What you'll find out there is that most of the scooters that are out there, I think, have probably a maximum speed a little higher than ten miles per hour, and most, I would venture to say most used by people eighteen or older probably would fall under the speed category of something faster than ten. The use of these electric scooters would be authorized in the corporate limits of the city if you chose to pass an ordinance, and like I said earlier, the ordinance that we have right now bans these on public ways. The liability risks are something that need to be considered, something that we should be open for discussion. I can't speak to that, and I'm open for questions if anybody has.
Anyone have any questions? Alderman O'Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's probably more so for attorney general is seeing that in the IML briefing that we all received, like what, can you speak to high level what that increased liability is on the city? Like, my understanding is for misuse, but I'm also thinking like if somebody drives their car misuse down the bike path, do we have liability for that too? Like, I was trying to make apples to apples because I was understanding is any misuse of it would put us in liability, but I think that's probably an inherent risk that we have anyway.
So, the, the IML's literature that speaks to potential liability for a municipality relates to a previous, you know, previous bill before the law was enacted regarding the e-scooters. And basically, it referenced in that first draft of the bill that this type of use would not be a permitted use as deemed under the Local Governmental Employees Tort Immunity Act. And so what that meant was that there would be less liability for a municipality, that the Tort Immunity Act would apply and the municipality would not be liable for the use of e-scooters because it's not deemed an intended use of that right of way. Well, that provision was removed from the law, and so what this means is that the Tort Immunity Act applies to the municipality still, but the law, the Tort Immunity Act requires that the city use the duty of reasonable, or have, has a duty to exercise reasonable care in maintaining its right of ways, and that, and, and your duty applies to those that are intended to use those right of ways. So in a situation where someone is driving down the sidewalk, well, that's not an intended use of that right of way. What, what the law now reads is that these e-scooters would be an intended use of that right of way. So the duty for the city would kick in and you have the duty to exercise reasonable care to maintain that right of way, and if an injury occurs, you could be liable. But the Tort Immunity Act also says that you're not liable unless you, you, the city, have actual or constructive notice of, of that defect that would have caused the injury. So you still have the benefits and the protections of the Tort Immunity Act. It's just that if you allow these e-scooters to, if you permit them in the city, they'll be deemed, you know, intended users of that right of way, and if for some reason you fail to maintain that in, in a reasonable way, the city could see liability.
So we'll use the most recent snow event. Kudos to Aaron and the team for getting all the streets and everything cleared. That we'd be safe on. I mean, there's always the gray area, but if it was a gaping pothole in the sidewalk that, but like regular snow removal, we'd be generally protected from?
Right, and then actual or constructive notice has a specific definition. It has to be something that's so obvious or someone called the city and let them know and then nothing was ever done. So those are examples.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief, so we currently do not allow them? Is that what I understand?
That is correct.
And the state law says that if you are going to allow them, I thought you listed a bunch of restrictions. Is that what the state is saying, that if you do allow them, you must maintain these restrictions?
That is correct.
Of which some of the, one of them that caught my eye was you must be eighteen years or older?
Correct.
So, a couple of questions. Most people I see riding them are not eighteen years or older.
Right.
These are young kids. The incidents that you reported, the accidents, are those, do you have data on whether those were eighteen years or older or the young kids?
I do have data on that.
Are all these incidents within Rolling Meadows proper?
Yes. All on Rolling Meadows roads, public roads. In two thousand and twenty-three, I believe two of the incidents involved juveniles. I don't have a specific age. All I can tell you is they were juveniles, so they're under eighteen. In two thousand and twenty-four, I believe it was one. Sorry?
A juvenile?
Juvenile, yes.
Fatality was a juvenile?
No, fatality was not. Fatality was an adult.
Okay, and I believe there was another, you may know this, it wasn't Rolling Meadows proper, but over there on Elgonquin Road, the incident, not too far back. That was a young girl.
Schaumburg, a pedestrian, I believe.
Is that a pedestrian?
It was a pedestrian. Yeah, that was the student from Plum Grove Middle School, I believe. That's the one you're referring to.
Someplace in one of the newspaper reports, it said something about e-scooters.
No, that was, my understanding was that was a pedestrian. They were going, Elgonquin at Thorn Tree, I think the area by the mobile station. That was, they were on foot, I believe.
Okay, so because of these state restrictions that say eighteen years or older, I think it's going to be difficult to maintain this. Is that your opinion?
I would agree enforcement could be difficult. It is tough for officers when they're out and about to arbitrarily decide whether somebody is under or over eighteen without it being obvious.
My last question is, you showed a picture of an e-scooter. I get that one, but there's a lot of other variants. a lot of other variants of these things. Are those also called under the same regulations or is it just the ones that have a scooter look to it?
The only ones that have a scooter look and only ones that are less than 100 pounds and can only go 10 miles an hour, no, no faster. I would say most of them probably are able to go faster than that.
So what I see is like electric skateboards is not in this?
It's not specifically listed in here, no.
Okay, thank you.
True.
Does anybody else?
Alderman O'Brian?
So we're talking about putting on a public right of way and someplace between a 20 to 30 mile an hour on average speed range, and they're going to be at least 10 to 20 miles an hour under that then?
Right.
So it's going to create, in theory, we're authorizing the use of a traffic hazard?
That argument could be made.
Okay. So, and other municipalities prohibit them specifically?
Many of these ordinances that I've referenced here are old. I don't think anybody has really addressed this new state statute yet. Out of those five jurisdictions, they have not.
If we do nothing, they're still illegal and not authorized to be used on our road, correct?
That is correct.
I got two parts, right? Because I could have more than two bites at the apple since it's committed whole. Deputy Chief, in your experience, how would this be enforced? Is Officer Smith sees, because my worries, like my colleague said, it's Johnny going to school at Kimball Hill. The officer just used discretion and talked to him and then go talk to the parent. Like, I don't want it to become a burden on our officers either from this perspective. It's just kind of like, as long as they're, kind of like, as long as they're obeying the general rules like a driver does, there's no cause for being pulled over?
I, I think there would have to be a pretty extensive public education component here before we could really effectively start enforcement. Between social media campaign and then just being out amongst the public, talking with kids that are out on these scooters, educating them, before we could really start any, any real serious enforcement efforts. I'm not sure how serious of enforcement effort we would make on these unless the incident called for it. Most of it would be centered toward education.
I guess, I'm going to go in a slightly different direction. I don't have a problem either way with this. I've got more concern around the e-bikes. That's what I've heard from residents on. So I just, if my, the council feels we should move forward in looking at an ordinance, I don't know, this might be for more for Attorney Wolf to research and bring back to us, I'd love to include e-bikes too. And I might be jaded going to the Loop four days a week or the bikes think like they're going everywhere. As a driver, it's not our issue 90% of the times because the bikes aren't paying attention to anything. I've got more concerns, I saw in the department where Secretary of State has some classifications of e-bikes, like if it's certain size up to 20 miles per hour, up to 28 miles an hour, I don't even know if the police radars would get somebody at 10 miles an hour or less if it would clock a kid on a scooter under 10 miles an hour. That's my only other ask is as a council, if we do move forward in that, that we consider putting something on e-bikes if we could, if we could.
So your, sorry, your ask could be to look at an ordinance that would not allow e-bikes?
Or if we do, they have to follow the same rules that everyone would put in for e-scooters. We just like adopt an e-transport vehicle ordinance. And I don't even know if we can, because the state doesn't have any laws around, all that I could find was they classify them based on speed. Like, it's like, and it's in the Secretary of State, it's something up to 20 miles an hour is a class one, class two is something that goes above 20 miles per hour, there's class three is up to 28 miles an hour. I would just like to see an e-transport, if we do move forward. And I'm not sold one way or the other, I'd like to hear what the rest of my peers say. Just if we did move forward with a scooter, I'd like to adopt something for bikes too because I've not gotten a call on a scooter. I've gotten calls on bikes.
Alderman O'Keehan?
So, as of right now, technically none of us are supposed to be e-scootering around.
On public ways, correct.
Okay. I, I have no problems with the electric scooters. I think they're fun. And I think that people should be able to use them if they want to within the law. So if we, so as of this point right now, if we do nothing, we're all breaking the law. Who is using the e-scooters? But we would have to have an ordinance that, would it be, would the state law be sufficient enough to cover what we need to do within the municipality? Or do we need to be reinventing like some new thing for Rolling Meadows specifically?
Yeah, the state statute set forth a number of preemptions on home role authorities whereby if a municipality were to adopt an ordinance to allow e-scooters, it would have to do so with those stipulations that are set forth in the statute incorporated into it essentially. So, in essence, what you would be, what we would be doing on the local level is adopting an ordinance that allows e-scooters, but that the state statute and the regulations pertaining within it still would apply. I believe we could potentially be more restrictive than the state has within the statute, but we would essentially be aligning with what is outlined already within the statute, simply saying that those who are 18 and older can ride an e-scooter that goes 10 miles an hour or less on specific, you know, the roadway essentially.
Thank you. Alderman O'Keehan?
So, a question for Deputy Chief. If I go into many cities, and I'm trying to think if Chicago has it, you'll see, like Lyft has these scooters, are those the same class or is that a different group?
I believe the Lyft scooters, I've only seen them when my kids were in college. I can guarantee you those were faster than 10 miles per hour.
That's what I'm asking.
So no, I don't believe those would fall under the same category.
So it's a whole different class of?
Whole different class.
It comes under different regulations probably.
Yes.
Okay. And then for city manager or Madam Mayor Protem, if we don't, if we wanted to do something, could we have something that says these have to be driven within bike lanes or certain things? Or do we just open it up and say roads? Because I know we're going to be looking at this year our bicycle pedestrian plans. And is it possible that we would delay this until we understand what we have for bicycle and pedestrians so that we can put these into that as regulated, can we regulate to use these only to there, in those things, in those regions?
So, if, I can touch on a few of the different points if I may?
Go for it.
So, delaying simply just means that for the time being, they'll continue to be prohibited items used within the city. And as far as enacting specific locations in which they can operate, I'd have to go back and review the state statute exactly where the state statute allows for and doesn't allow for these types of transportation devices to operate. But again, I think ultimately, we can be more restrictive than the state allows for and say that it can only be on designated bike, bike routes or bike paths if we would want to go down that road. But we can't be less restrictive. So it would have to align with whatever the statute is and then we can add on additional restrictions thereafter.
I could see being allowed in like, because e-bikes are all over the place now too. I could see if we said they were designated bike trails, they could be used on those. I have a bit of a concern using them in areas that don't have that designation just because of the conflict between pedestrians and cars. So, I would prefer to see something along the line of a restriction, and if you can look that up, what we could do, a restriction that says certain areas are allowed and certain areas are not allowed. And the reason I ask that is because, I don't know if it sees, but I do see a lot going to the train station over at Arlington Park. And they get on the train and they take them into the city and then have them in the city with them. And I think they might be a different class though. I don't know if these, these smaller ones, I think they might be a higher class one that they're taking to the city. So that's the only reason I ask is, if we're going to have it and we can restrict certain areas, I'll be okay. Otherwise, I'm a bit concerned.
If I can.
Yep, go ahead.
And so, according to the statute, I'll read it verbatim. So this is section 11 dash 1518. A person, 1518-8, a person may operate a low-speed electric scooter where the operation of a bicycle is permitted, including but not limited to bicycle lanes and bicycle paths, and shall have all the rights and shall be subject, subject to all the duties applicable to the rider of a bicycle under this chapter except as otherwise provided. So I think that's pretty much designating that it's, you know, anywhere a bicycle is allowed to, but that's pretty broad.
But not limited to.
But not limited to. So it's pretty broad. So I think if we were to adopt something locally, you could include language that would be more restrictive, that would identify specific locations where they are or are not permitted to be used.
And that is different from an e-bike as well. So that language is referring to a bicycle.
Bicycle.
And that's not the same as an e-bike, because an e-bike has different restrictions applicable to where it can be.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
I didn't know that. So what do we need to? You had some recommendations here. Can you clarify your recommendations of what you're asking the council?
As far as city staff's position on it? So, we, we're bringing this forward because the question has arisen a few times about whether or not Rolling Meadows allows for e-scooters in light of the new statute. The city staff is, is really deferring to the council's direction on whether or not to allow these based on the new law. Given the fact that the statute is in place effective January 1st of this year, we have, we're in a position, even with our city code having had it in there, we're in a position already where we are bound by what is within the state statute that they're not permitted. So, the question that is presented to the council is whether or not the council desires for us to move forward with an ordinance that would allow for e-scooters to be used by individuals 18 or older. Staff ourselves don't have a recommendation either or, we're just putting this out as a policy question for the council to decide and provide direction back to us whether we stick with what the statute sets forth and they remain illegal, or if the council desires for us to present an ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Bremetsch. So, thanks for the second bite. So the question is, it sounds like the, the real group of people who wants to use these out however are younger than 18, is that correct?
That is commonly what we're saying, yes.
So there's no 18-year-olds in middle school and there's very few 18-year-olds in high school? But these are showing up with the middle school and the high school, right?
Yeah, they're, they're already owned within the community and used widely by youth.
Okay. So then, can we license them for a very small fee, $5? But however, when you license it, you agree to hold the city harmless from any activity that occurs from unlicensed or underage persons using that licensed device in the city on city thoroughfares?
Well, someone under 18 would not be an intended and permitted user of the e-scooter on the city's right of way or wherever it was allowed. So the Tort Immunity Act would kick in. You could require that kind of language, whether it would hold up would be another question. The Tort Immunity Act would control with respect to that, but yeah.
If a person come in, and they're more than 18 and they have to have the license for that device, then they're, they would be the persons accepting, I mean, there's property damage cases as well, so who's, who's picking up the property damage when 13-year-olds run it into a car or whatever they run it into? So, this way at least we have a responsible party, right? Who wants to let their kids use them?
Yeah, it's something that can be evaluated because, I mean, the licensing scheme may involve the city when you don't necessarily need to. And, you know, our immunity would apply, our statutory immunity as a governmental entity would apply. But, you know, the more involved you are in, in the e-scooter process and, and the licensing, I don't know if that could implicate some additional liability that the city would not otherwise have. But, you know, I understand what you're trying to do. I think we could analyze whether that would give the city some additional protection over the misuse of those e-scooters or whether it would somehow interfere with the protections we already have.
Okay.
So, I'm going to say one thing, is that okay? Yes? I just don't think that it's our job to tell people what they can do or not do when they're 18 years old or, and if they are under 18, then that's a apparent issue and should be addressed that way. But we should at least let the community decide whether or not they want to do it, if they want to get an e-scooter and ride it around on a bike path and, why not? So, I've kind of heard that we're, as a council, would like to see an ordinance. You do not want to see an ordinance?
I think, I think leave it the way it is, without an ordinance.
And make, keep it?
Keep it with the state law that says it is prohibited.
But we have to do? We have to do something because otherwise it's illegal in the city of Rolling Meadows, right?
You only have to take action if you want to make them legal. If you do nothing, then they remain illegal and this topic has been asked and answered in a sense.
We just don't do anything and leave them.
Then they're illegal.
Then they are illegal.
They remain illegal.
I don't agree. Okay, so I guess we'll do a straw vote. I'm sorry, can I just, for clarifications? If we do something and we say yes, they can have the e-bikes, then we defer to the state law? Or we can?
You don't defer to the state.
Not defer, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's sufficient to, we would follow the state regulations and then we can make more restrictions.
The state law says they're prohibited unless they're permitted by a municipality or the various governmental entity that's applicable. And, but, and if they are permitted, these regulations that are dictated by the state law must be the minimum regulations applicable to it. So, yes, we would, if, if the city chose to permit it, you'd have to pass an ordinance permitting it and you'd have to meet those requirements, those minimum requirements dictated by the state.
So, I'm going to, that we're going to take a straw vote, you can correct me at any point because this is wrong.
Straw poll.
Poll. Sorry. That we would like, who would like to see an ordinance written by city staff as a next step on how to address e-scooters? Yes?
Which would permit them?
Which would permit. So, three would like to and those who would not. So, this is really, you can go ahead and put together an ordinance for us to consider on making the use of e-scooters legal in the city of Rolling Meadows.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Only, the only other question is the e-bike.
Question? Are we required to have a quorum of the council in order to do that? Are we supposed to have four votes in order for that to happen?
No, you, the committee, I mean, this is sufficient to give staff direction to go ahead and prepare it.
Okay.
But the city council obviously will.
Okay, no, I'm just curious. All right.
There's a quorum of the council present, a simple majority of the council can.
Okay. It doesn't have to be a majority of the city council as a whole, but a majority of the, those that are present is sufficient to give us the direction.
Yeah, I feel we have this bewildered look on my face for the last five minutes. Like, if, I know we can't go less restrictive than the state, I'm having a problem with Timmy riding his scooter down the street to go to school, but right now that's prohibited by the state law anyways, right? So even if we did nothing, now granted, it's our police department's expertise, they're not going to pull Timmy over for going to school unless he's doing something that's putting somebody in danger. I guess that's just like, but we, if we were going to become more restrictive, it would be taking the age to 21, not to 16 or to 12, correct? That's what I'm struggling with is, could we write it in a way, and I'm totally guessing, I didn't play an attorney on TV, is, could we write it that it's allowed and passed to school, like where they could be under 18 going to school? We can't. It could only be if we want it to be 21-year-olds. We could go up and, right, we could make it more restrictive. In this case, more restrictive is if we said you had to be 21 to ride it versus 16. That's just, so every kid in the state of Illinois that rides one of these to school is illegal regardless if you're in Rolling Meadows or you're in Shanahan or Springfield.
Well, it, those municipalities may have permitted it.
Right, but it could be under 18, right?
Yes, 18, correct, you're right.
Okay. Clearly regulated to change the state law, but that's where I'm struggling. So anything we can do to help kids be able to get to Kyma to the summer or their baseball game or their soccer game?
It's illegal.
But it's illegal!
Take a bike or walk.
Didn't even know that they were writing this. Okay, I think you're excused.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
No, we'll go back to council for review.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is a city hall roof replacement discussion, which will defer to Public Works Director Erin Grosskopf.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and talk about one of my favorite aspects of any facility, the roof. Protects us from all sorts of elements, so it's very important to keep it in good condition. So, as we continue on here tonight, a few of the topics we're going to be covering, we'll go through a little bit of the background, the current conditions. the current condition of the roof, the few options that we have for replacement, and of course, our recommendation, and then discussion of the topic. So, background, the roof for city hall is currently at least twenty years old. The exact age is actually unknown, it can be upwards twenty-five to thirty years old. We don't actually have the data on when certain portions of this roof has been replaced. However, what we do know is that we had an evaluation performed by Wold Architects in two thousand and twenty-four, and they came back with a pretty decent report for us in an analysis on the condition of the roof. So in two thousand and twenty-five, this year, we currently have six hundred thousand dollars budgeted. If you're curious where that number came from, prior to the actual roof evaluation that was done by Wold, we had a facility analysis performed that encompassed the entire facility of city hall. And they had recommended a six hundred thousand dollar replacement number, and that is what we programmed into this year's capital plan. Unfortunately, after completion of the roof assessment, what we found was that in two thousand and twenty-nine numbers, our total costs, and and when I speak of total costs, I'm I'm speaking of the construction aspect, the engineering aspect, and the contingency was just over one million dollars at one million forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-six. So keep in mind, this is actually two thousand and twenty-nine numbers, we'll get to it a little bit later on, but that price does decrease by three percent every year if you want to do the replacement sooner. And then discussions for tonight are going to be focused around three areas of the roof, section one point oh, two point oh, and five point oh. Those are the three main areas of the roof. There's other sections called out in the actual report, but those are pretty miniscule. They just called out each individual elevation on the roof, and then you have kind of the tarps and things like the awning over the entrance. And then you also have nine point oh, which is actually the PD garage roof. That is in excellent condition right now, so we're not really looking at replacing that within the next ten years or so. Once we get to it, we'll of course have that planned in our capital budget. So I'm going to run through these just really quickly. It's just a couple snapshots I wanted to show of the, you know, the high priority roof areas. So you have one point oh, and then a core sample. For the cores here, you're going to see, it's kind of hard to tell, but you can actually see the steel decking underneath. And then you have some gypsum board, a waterproofing layer, you have rigid insulation, some wood fiber, more insulation, wood fiber, and then the top membrane. And that membrane is painted white for UV reasons, bounces the heat off the roof. And this is section two point oh with another core sample, and then you see section five point oh with another core sample. So just some, a little bit of screenshot of of what the roof looks like right now. According to the survey we had done of the analysis of the roof, they are at priority level two. So what does that mean? It means that there's no hole in the roof and water is not actively leaking on us, and the snow doesn't get through, but it still should be replaced within probably four to five years at the latest, sooner the better in the situation. So that brings us to our replacement options. Kind of hard to read because the print is so small, so I'm going to run through it really quickly. Obviously, we talked about the cost in two thousand and twenty-nine, one million forty-nine thousand dollars. That is essentially four years away now, and that's something that we can plan in our capital plan going forward for that year. So the caveat with this option is you can actually do this replacement twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six. Each year you bring it down, you reduce the cost by a total of three percent each year. Obviously, the advantages of doing this in two thousand and twenty-nine gives us time to build up the funds and building in land to perform the roof replacement. You'll obviously see increased energy efficiency when the project is completed. That's the same for all of these options, actually. And it reduces the total number of years that it's going to impact the facility, or at least the replacement of the roof will impact the facility. You'll see why that's important later on. Disadvantages, obviously, there's a significant financial commitment if you do this in a single year. You have potential for some major disruptions to staff. When I say major, I mean, they're going to have to be relocated. No one's going to want to work directly under a roof being replaced. So it will cost some displacement essentially for everybody on the second and third floor of the city hall at some point through the project. And then, yeah, that's the two main disadvantages that we have seen. Replacement option two, so this is almost the same thing, one-year replacement, except it's done in two thousand and twenty-five, so that is this year. So as I mentioned earlier, we have six hundred thousand dollars scheduled for this year to replace the roof. The total estimated cost after you take that twelve percent reduction from doing it so soon is nine hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and three dollars and sixty-eight cents. So with that being said, we have a rough shortfall of just over three hundred thousand dollars. How can we make that up? We have a fire pump replacement scheduled for this year for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Late two thousand and twenty-four, we actually had to rebuild that fire pump because it failed on us. So that no longer has to be replaced this year, it can be pushed out for a future capital year. City hall elevator upgrade, we combed through that project significantly earlier this year, and we actually do not need the mechanical upgrades that we thought we did, so we can do some minor facelift, so we can take that capital money that we're planning on doing for the elevator upgrade and shift that towards the much more important city hall roof project. Additionally, we did realize fifty thousand dollars in savings on the EV chargers, due to some grant funding that we're able to achieve, so we can use that money and put it towards the project as well. So you're looking at a two hundred thousand dollar, not windfall, but reshifting of funds to go to that roof. That brings us to around one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars short of where we actually want to be for the replacement. Overall, the advantage and disadvantages of doing it this year, one, it gets done sooner, but also the disadvantage, we're not going to fall within the budgeted range of what we had projected. And I know our finance director does not like that very much, so we'd like to try to stay within our budgeted range as much as possible. Replacement option number three. So this one is a two-year replacement schedule, we're actually able to do the first year, sections one point oh, two point oh, and then you have those two smaller sections of three and four, all within one year for a total cost of four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, that's estimated. And that's what we're going to see if we wanted to complete just two major phases of the roof this year, and then we can do five point oh and seven point oh the following fiscal year, and we'll be able to stay within our budgeted range with that one. So that's a very key factor of why this is such a big advantage to us. And then we can go through our capital budget process and actually rebudget the money for next year to fill in for that additional four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Another advantage of this one is we're actually able to realize still some of the savings of doing the project earlier, but not outside of our budgeted range. Moving on to the option overview, so one, we can do it in two thousand and twenty-nine in a single year, or any year prior to that, except for that leads us to option two, which is doing it in two thousand and twenty-five, which is this year in a single year. And option three, of course, is the two-year project. Staff recommendation, after we've looked at this, looking at the disruptions that this could cause doing it in a single year, looking at the budgeted amount that we have, we feel most comfortable doing this in a two-year phase. So doing that first year and then the second year, that will allow us to do a little bit more flexible with the shifting of staff, as well as stay within our budgeted range for this year and then rebudget for the following. With that, what we're seeking for right now is council direction on which option you'd like to see staff proceed for the city hall roof replacement.
Does anyone have any questions?
What's the contingency on these? Let's go with three, you have four hundred, go back to the slide that gives the number. Four hundred and ninety-two thousand, do you have a contingency associated with that?
There is a ten percent contingency associated with it.
So about another fifty thousand. So that would get us to about five forty-two.
The contingency is already built into the cost.
Are you smiling? Still, I I mean, you're almost pointing us to the answer you want, which is option three. And then is there anything in two thousand and twenty-six that we're anticipating might? Because you have looked out into future years, right? Is this something that we would, could put in there and not have a? Is it in there now?
So for the plans that Director Grosskopf laid out, the shifting, he's kind of laid out what we would shift from other projects to be able to do it at the higher cost. So there was a look kind of at that whole plan, and this is what was kind of thought of to kind of shift to get that funding. There's also always opportunities that another project may come in under that then, you know, would realize savings somewhere else. And we've seen that a few times on different projects. I think you do have room to look at it, especially since Director Grosskopf's already kind of identified where he would shift funding or move projects if you want to go with one of the other options that are above the current budget specifically just for this project.
One follow-up question to to our city finance director. You have a couple things you were playing with in option, I think, it was option one or two, where you said you could pull money from other areas and you had that. I identified where you might be able to pull some money up to two hundred thousand dollars in there. Are you nervous about the budget going forward, knowing that the federal and state money may be at risk? The federal's threatening to cut a lot of programs and the state is already got a huge deficit that they're going to have to start carving away. Does that make us nervous that we might want to hold that two hundred thousand for things that need to get done?
It doesn't make me as nervous as maybe you would think because, well, one, the federal funding, we kind of identified. Remember in December, we went over all of our grants? So we have, I think, a pretty clear idea of what could be impacted if federal funding were to end, and those projects were identified kind of in those grants. So we know where we'd have to kind of reevaluate and come up with a new plan. Most of those options probably be more than the two hundred thousand that we'd be shifting for this project, right? It would be a bigger look at all our projects, so we would have to do kind of a mini little capital project kind of revamp if federal funding were to cease. The state funding, there's always, you know, the worry state has a shortfall in funding, but the state's been pretty good recently, continuing with their payments and honoring all of the agreements that we have with them, so I'm not as nervous about the state. And we also have been really working hard at those fund balances, so we do have a good fund balance in the general fund, we've built it back with the refuse fund and utilities, so we're, we've been making efforts in all those different funds to kind of build back that, those kind of rainy day funds. And so we have that in a lot of our funds, that there are areas in which if some funding didn't come through, that we do have other funds that we could tap into if we needed. So I'm not as nervous as maybe, maybe some might think about the federal funding or state funding, because I think we do have kind of different tools that we can turn to when, if that should happen.
So the governor is presenting his budget, I think, sometime around now, right?
Tomorrow.
Okay, presenting it tomorrow. If he, once that works its way through the system, when would that kick in?
They're on a July one start date.
July one, okay, so it'd be the second half of the year we're looking at. It'd be, if anything happens, it'd be second half of the year.
Correct.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Budmats?
Thank you. So this report was written by Arcon and their consultant.
Apologize, Arcon, yes, not Wold.
What?
I think I said Wold earlier, but it is Arcon.
Okay, and but they're not a roofing contractor, correct?
They're an architect engineer.
Okay, so I guess the question is, like, like we've talked about, getting quotes from people who are going to do our streets early because it saves us money because they like to have a project in hand to start the year, is it worth us getting quotes to, if if we're considering doing the roof all of this year, just getting a quote and finding out maybe that the nine hundred thousand is really eight hundred thousand because somebody's hungry? And that makes it a lot more palatable, but we really won't know until we ask for bids.
That is correct, so this process, due to the cost in the city's purchasing policy, we would go through a sealed bid kind of procurement method, and that would lead us hopefully to the lowest, most responsible bidder, and I would love to see those numbers come in lower, so they absolutely could, yes.
And we could bid it both ways, whether it all be done this year or half this year and half next year?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll I'll ask the easy question first, am I, I'm I'm in support of recommendation three. Is, am I right then, roof areas five, six, and eight don't have to be touched if I'm looking at what would be there twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six?
Only roof areas, so I don't actually have the report pulled up in front of me, but I believe five is one of the ones that does need to be replaced, that's one of the larger sections. If you see in the report, you see nine, nine does not need to be touched, that's the PD garage.
Okay, that's what I thought you'd say, then maybe, so maybe I misread the write-up here, it was showing year one, we would replace one, two, three, four, and year two would be nine and seven replaced.
Would be a typo on my end then.
No, that's all right.
It is five and seven that would be replaced, and I believe one, two, three, and four would be replaced the first year.
So now here's the the hard question, is that this is more, I guess I I've said this before too, I'm wishing we just had a crystal ball. I'm worried we're getting to the point of, if we as council make the decision we're staying here in city hall, and I don't want like, this is a twenty-five, like a longer-term plan, but we're going to spend a million dollars on the roof, it's needed. We just are remodeling the police women's and men's locker room, because I think the last time they were done was in the seventies or eighties. Chief, deputy chief, it's at least been thirty, maybe if not even forty years on those. We're going to need at some point, I think, to keep our accreditation, we understand the shooting range for the police officers need a significant amount of work, I guess I'm just struggling. It's needed, but it's another band-aid, but I think about it as our houses too, or where everybody lives. It's regular maintenance property for our house, for an apartment, that's needed. I am just struggling, that's why I'd like the year, the option three approach is we'll do some this year, some next year, stay within the budget means. I just wish we had a crystal ball that, here goes another million dollars, that in my mind is a band-aid approach, along with repairs that are needed, but just from that space needs assessment that we've been working on for a while now, I wish we we had a crystal ball on that. So I don't expect an answer, that's just the perspective I'm looking through is, it's needed, we need the roof in city hall to be a safe environment, but it's also how much more do we want to put on, and I'm viewing them as band-aids, what we've done recently with the conditions of city hall.
Okay, so I guess we'll take a poll. Oh, actually, can I ask a question? So if I understand, understood what Alderman Budmats asked, you could ask for a quote for both option two and three? Like they'd have to present for both or present for whichever option they would.
Yeah, so what we would do is when we put together the bid documents, or Arcon puts together the big documents, or whoever, whatever engineer we decide to use, we would ask them to include essentially two options. One would be to do the full replacement in two thousand and twenty-five, give us a price for that. And then there would be a second option that we would include, which would be, if we don't do it all in two thousand and twenty-five, give us a price for this section of the roof this year and then another section next year. So we would essentially put almost two bid options in the single package.
Okay, and I kind of like that option because if somebody wants, can come in lower, we can just get it done? Okay, so.
Don't you expect the numbers to be the same, it's just split across two, two years? Possibly an acceleration higher next year, but isn't, didn't you, I I have to go back to your numbers between the option three and option two, was the number still the same, it just splits across two years?
So option two and three, two had overall a little bit lower number because we calculated a three percent increase for two thousand and twenty-six. So if you, if we split the project over two years, it would be slightly higher, we would anticipate it to be slightly higher in two thousand and twenty-six due to just.
Right, the number, let's say you're taking the number from two thousand and twenty-five and say I'm taking this chunk off, putting it here and adding three percent, that's, so it's the same number, so the bid is the same. The bid is the same, it's just splitting it over two years or and adding a three percent incremental increase or?
Wouldn't it be three percent more for the second half? So it's still, it's not going to be the same number, will pay less in theory if there's an escalation on the part that happens in two thousand and twenty-six.
I get what you're saying, I'm just saying the number's the same, except we we are going to add an escalation. You're right, there're going to be an escalation if you split it across.
Right.
The cost is the cost of the.
We're going to remobilize twice for the same project, and so the guy's going to have to come out here with all of his equipment twice, take it back home. And I don't know, maybe they use eggs in it, you know, and it's like, who knows, those might not be limited to three percent increase year over year. Just saying.
I I would personally like to see if we could get it done all as like completed project, if it'd be cheaper and not have a, because you're, something could happen in next year that product is more than we.
Yeah, but the time value of money, it sits in our bank and we could get more out of it than the three percent escalation. Time value of money says you're better to sit with, you're better to sit with the money in the bank than to spend it now. It's always the way it works, right?
My other concern would be year-over-years availability of, someone could quote out that things are available this year that may not be available next year, and now we've got half a roof.
Yeah, we don't know.
And we're waiting for.
We don't know supply.
Supply chain to catch up to whatever.
We don't know that, I agree with you on that.
Okay, so all of those that would be in favor of seeing both options in a bid package, raise your hand.
Wait, what was?
Both options, so see the pricing for two and three.
Doesn't hurt.
Can we do that for?
Absolutely.
Looks like this year.
Doesn't hurt.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Okay, so our third item on the agenda is the sustainability plan review, which will defer to Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Glenn Cole.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will actually in turn defer to Rob Savage, the city's planner and management analyst.
Thank you and good evening, councils. I'm Rob Savage and we're planning with the community development. So as you recall, in 2023, in December, the city adopted the sustainability plan. And so this plan was based essentially on the framework from developed by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, we called the Greenest Regions Compact. And it consists of 42 short-term strategies. Ultimately, none of these strategies should take more than about 18 months to complete on their own. And the entire turnaround for the project was expected to be roughly three years. And the goals revolve around the topics of climate, economic development, energy, land, leadership, mobility, municipal operations, sustainable communities, waste and recycling, and water and stormwater. So as it stands currently, staff have either put into progress or, or completed 32 out of the 42 goals. These actions have been, have been distributed kind of across the plan. So these are both high and lower priority items. They are more difficult and less difficult items. We've been trying to kind of chip away at the plan quite holistically. And it's been really collaboratively done across multiple departments. So it's been, seen a lot of involvement from staff in public, public works, community development across the city manager's office. Parks district have had, have had some input. Police and fire have had input. Human services have been vital to, to many of the goals as well as the Community Events Foundation and the Environmental Committee. And so what does complete really mean when we're talking about some of these goals? You know, there are some kind of slightly maybe nebulous endpoints for some of these items. You can see here, there's the goal that the city will inform the community about, about potentially hazardous air quality index forecasts and air pollution action days. And so if we do put out a warning for the community regarding air quality on a certain day, is that then complete? Well, we would like to do that every time there's an ongoing issue with air quality. So, you know, we will put completed on some of these items, knowing that it's not complete for the next time. And as these things come around periodically, we're aiming to be quite diligent in, 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 you know, addressing these goals as part of our workflow. Similarly, you know, something like Rolling Meadows will support community arts and cultural events. We have that as in, in progress. You know, I believe 2024 was a really productive year for arts and cultural events in Rolling Meadows, Bites and Beats Festival and Friday's Rock and numerous other events. We are aiming to be really involved with this going forward. So, you know, it's kind of a perpetually in progress kind of item. So some of the larger projects that we've been tackling, recently we have been working through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus EV readiness program and we're preparing for a, either a silver or gold designation in late May. So the three kind of primary goals of this program was to develop a robust zoning framework that would encourage and support EV infrastructure. Obviously, the council will be receiving this item for a second reading next meeting. Community development have also been working to implement a permitting and inspection framework that hopefully makes it easy and fast for residents and businesses to do these installs. And that involves a lot of training for our inspectors and there's quite a lot of backend to it. And then further, there's kind of a, a publishing of communications. So developing resources for people in the community to, to be using for their EV charger installation. Further on to this, that we're also about to receive six new public, publicly available EV chargers at City Hall, which is fantastic. Probably the largest project that we've been working through and involves a lot of, a lot of sustainability plan related topics is the Coach Off Road Corridor Study. And so a really big component of this is, is about that more sustainable land use, promoting infill development and, you know, more, more active development that, that promotes bikeability and walkability. So, you know, one planning strategy, you, you can see has a lot of downstream effects in terms of sustainability. We're also looking to implement improved landscape requirements that are going to hopefully foster more native planting, things like this. So you get this sort of very grassroots kind of scale, but also at a very large scale as well. And then we have what we'd call low hanging fruit. So this would be the kind of items that we periodically, we can, we can check off relatively easily. And a big one that we're beginning to work, work with, with the environmental committee for 2025 is kind of a, a communications and education suite that addresses a lot of these kind of more communications focused tasks from the sustainability plan. So things like educating the public about climate change, educating the public on alternative transportation and fuels. And so the environmental committee will be divvying up these tasks and, and using the city's media channels to, to release small bits of information. They're also aiming to organize a summer speaker series, which will hopefully be hosted in, in either the park or, or with library, on the library grounds, which will commission some, some professionals in the sustainability space to be addressing the public. Similar to the next couple, we're about to receive a textile recycling bin at City Hall as well as our new no idling signs, which I have an example over here in the flesh, very shiny, very nice. And these will be distributed to all the schools within the city. And onto the coming year, so there's a couple of larger ticket items that will, will, will be taking up some of our time through later 2025 and into 26. The first being, we're aiming to be designated a bicycle friendly community in 2026. There's quite a lot of backend work that's going to be involved in preparing the application for this. It's going to coincide with some safe routes to school planning work as well as a bicycle and pedestrian, bicycle and pedestrian plan that aims to improve the connections and network of cycling infrastructure and end of trip facilities in, in the city. Further on, we're aiming to be getting Soul Smart designation. Soul Smart is a program similar to the EV readiness cohort that essentially gives you, gives communities tools to implement policy and, and permitting inspections frameworks to try and incentivize more solar installation in the city. And finally, air quality monitoring, which is item C3 on the sustainability plan. Rolling Meadows will explore options for local air quality monitoring. And this is where we are asking for council direction because there is, there's a couple of different ways that we can approach this. Firstly, you know, it's, there is a bit of a question of why, why would we do this? There isn't necessarily a definitive end goal. It's potentially a nice to have, but it's also an issue of you don't know what you don't know. What we do know about air quality is that it's incredibly important to, you know, human and environmental health. So there are significant correlations with respiratory and pulmonary and cognitive effects with poor air quality. We can see on the right, this little graph. So essentially, people who live closest to expressways have just a much higher proportion of instances of asthma. So for every 100 meters further away from an arterial expressway that you live, your severity of asthma, symptom days go down by 30%. And so turns out, you know, living close to expressways weren't one of the biggest determinants of, of suffering from asthma. Rolling Meadows is uniquely situated between, you know, 53 and 90 and with close proximity to O'Hare. So we have this geography that's, you know, potentially problematic in some, in some public health ways. We have a relative high density of residential and school and other intensive uses, uses near our expressways. And so looking kind of, looking into the future a little bit, it's, it'd be important to have a data, a data rich understanding of, of any problems or any solutions were to shape any interventions in, in policy. And so there's a couple of different options that we can, we can go with. And so we have been working with University of Illinois in Chicago. They've invited us to participate in an air quality, a regional air quality study that is being hosted all across Chicagoland. And this is option one. So this was, would be the expensive option essentially. We'd, we'd be mapping out some sort of a grid and installing clarity node air sensors. So they're relatively expensive. They're about $5,000 per unit. They are very sensitive, so you get high quality data from them. Ultimately, I don't believe, given our geography and whatever budget we would be having for this, that we'd be able to put a very tight grid of these things. So we'd have relatively low grid density. But we would be able to partake in the study and receive analysis from UIC as their study progresses. So option two would be more of a city-led initiative where we would be purchasing what's called a purple air and they're much smaller and they're kind of like a self-administered or, you know, installed kind of premium spec, but like still kind of home quality, air quality monitor. They're about $300 per unit. They are lower resolution. They don't give you the, the data rich and, and the, you know, the complexity of, of information that you get from the clarity, but you do get PM 2.5 and VOCs, which are, you know, probably the big two most important things to be reading. So the data is then view, viewable on a regional grid. To pull the data apparently can be quite expensive though as well. So, you know, there are kind of hidden costs there. The downside would be that we wouldn't be included in the UIC analysis. Now, the third option, and this is true for, I believe, a, a lot of points of this sustainability plan. It's, it's a living document and periodically we, we should be able to review it. And if there are points that are not well-suited, not right-sized for our community, we can choose to take no action on them. And so if, if this is not a feasible thing or it's not viewed as necessarily the most important, we could, we could shelve it or we could, we could just take no further action on it within the sustainability plan. So any questions?
So just to be devil's advocate, if we spend all this money and we buy some of these $5,000 air sensors and participate in the study, what do we do with that data and analysis that we, that we derive? Does that, does that give us the option to change the usage patterns on 90 and 53? Is it, is it, or, or is this just data that tells us, yes, you have pretty poor air right now?
Yeah. So no, I, I think this is one of the things that often goes overlooked in my discipline of planning where, you know, when there is development pressure on certain parts of town, we often don't know very much about things like air quality and whether or not it's actually going to make a livable area. For instance, if there is a residential development that replaces a, you know, a lot, a less intensive use. So it's, it's one piece of a big kind of complex set of inputs for that, that kind of thing. Is there anything necessarily immediately actionable from the data? Probably not. It's, it's, I mean, unless, unless there are particular, you know, public health or environmental health interventions that we can, we can use, right? So maybe that is something just like, we need a lot more planting of certain, you know, species that are very good at scrubbing air in this certain area because it's uniquely impacted by, by air quality. But, you know, we don't know if we don't know.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
A couple of questions here is that, do we know who, I guess, in my mind, would it make more like the Schaumburg, Palatine, Arlington Heights, Hoffman Estates participate with UIC? Like if we do move forward, and I'm, I'm probably leaning more towards two or three right now option wise, but in order, like, do we know who else is participating in the UIC analysis? Like if we just have the six square miles of rolling, of ours, so on my point, what are we going to do with that data if all the other surrounding areas aren't doing something similar?
I have seen the map. I'm going to defer to Glenn because he's got the information probably closer at hand.
Sure. So, and Alderman O'Brien, I'm actually, I'm, I, I have a late breaking update to Mr. Savage's presentation in that in, in trying to pull up my file notes for this, I found out the Tribune wrote about it just two days ago. So that's very convenient. The UIC project is federal funded and it's, it's been kind of going down the track for a while. Let me state upfront what I know everyone's thinking, there is no opportunity for us to access that federal funding. But we can benefit from it indirectly. That's why option one is there. What they are looking at is up to, you know, through, between CDPH and this federal funding, deploying up to 200 monitors in some of the most polluted areas of Chicago. I'm looking for a number here. About 100 of those coming from this federal pot of money. It's really an environmental justice focused initiative. The opportunity that we had, and I should, I should say too, they're, they're hoping to start to deploy those in the summer and to really have the network fully online and, and gathering data that can be used by, I think, the end of 2026. The opportunity in Rolling Meadows was, you know, we're a little further out, so we, we break the grid there, but you know, can we match their methods? Can we match their equipment? And maybe can we essentially pre-ride on the analysis, right? You're already doing it anyway for 200 data points. Can you make it 210? It doesn't take any extra work and, and maybe you get some interesting information in part because, as you know, you know, most of the surrounds of O'Hare are suburbs. They're not Chicago neighborhoods, right? And so maybe that helps add a little bit of information, even if it's not comprehensive. We haven't approached our neighboring municipalities. I mean, I think the same questions we're asking here would make it harder to have a conversation at scale about it. And I, also too, I think some of the concerns that Mr. Savage has talked about and that were talked about at the sustainability plan at the end of 23, they're, they're kind of unique to Rolling Meadows, right? I mean, we all have transportation infrastructure, but, you know, and having two major roadways, you know, really bisect the town, that's something that isn't really necessarily true, you know, because they're a larger area in Palatine and Arlington Heights and Schaumburg. So I think it's more compelling for us. We can certainly have that conversation. I will say to, the window on option one, I, I hope it's open into next year. You know, it, it may be more difficult for us to get into that in, after this summer. And certainly, you know, if, if we're trying to complete all of this within three years, our ability to do that is, is kind of compromised after, if we wait till after this year to be able to make a decision. Sorry for the long answer.
No, it's helpful.
If, if I may add on just one, one point, the reason that this question is here, why we've brought this question up now is that this is an item included within our sustainability plan. And as we evaluated, how do we tackle this objective? What came out was that there would be expense involved, which we don't have budgeted at this stage. And so as we think about and to Assistant City Manager Cole's point about it, the window being open into 2026, we'll have to think about if ultimately we want to move forward down the path of this UIC study, we would also have to incorporate funds into our budget in order to purchase the nodes. into our budget in order to purchase the nodes. You know, I'll I'll share that both Assistant City Manager Cole and I have talked about wishing that UIC would pick up the tab and maybe apply the federal funding to help pay for or offset the funds on these nodes rather than shifting that burden onto the municipality. Nonetheless, this is what we've been presented with, is that if we were to participate in that UIC study, it is about five thousand per node spread across multiple nodes in the city. We've also evaluated in order to tackle this objective more locally, this option two. But we did also put out there option three, knowing that there is an expense with this, and then presenting it for the council's consideration, thinking about, to Alderman Budmans' question earlier about, you know, to what extent do we then control the outcomes of the data that we've now collected? So that's the reason why we're here having this conversation now, is that ultimately there is a budget impact with this that we'll have to think about if there is support on option one or two for us as we go into twenty twenty-six budget process.
Just one follow-up for that. Does it? This reminds me, we did a noise study along fifty-three. This reminds me of that. With whatever's happening at Arlington Park, regardless of what it becomes, is there any way the Environmental Protection Agency triggers some type of study that has to be done? Like, if I dot changes fifty-three exits entrances to accommodate? I learned during that time, we decided as council to postpone an additional funding because I dot would have to do a noise study depending on what reconfiguration happens. Any possibility that some thing would be triggered to pay for this as well, depending on what comes our into park? I don't know. That's I know I'm putting the staff on the spot. I just don't know. That reminded me of, hey, I dot might have to pay for the noise study. Would somebody else have to pay for this, whatever comes around to park?
Most of the environmental components that come with roadway realignments or expansion tend to look at the natural environment. So you're talking about runoff of water, contaminants of that nature. I don't know that they're also looking at the air quality impacts of those types of roadway constructions. We could find out from the EPA or I EPA to understand a little bit more on that, but to my knowledge, it's mostly on what does it what does it do to the to the natural environment around it, and how does it impact stormwater and things of that nature?
Great, thanks.
Can I ask a question? If so, back to with the roof asking about the federal funding. If we put money into five thousand dollar nodes and then the federal government cuts climate change funding, do we have the opportunity to collect that data in-house and analyze? Or are we just wasted five thousand dollars a node on a project that gets canceled?
Sure. So analysis can include many small things and many big things. We can definitely collect the data. We can store it. We can do rudimentary work with it. To what extent we'll be able to access expertise from our academic institutions in in that world you just talked about? I'm not sure what their availability is and funding and pro bono and everything else. I I don't think it's money wasted, but certainly at the big scale, you know, if the and I will say this, this Chicago Tribune report does not talk about that money going away yet. Not sure if it's secure or not. Certainly, that larger study or other US EPA or maybe even I EPA involvement that that could shrink, that could disappear. We could be left with much less informative products from the the higher-end option. That that middle option really it gives us a snapshot of really just one or two particular types of measurement, which are the most relevant to transportation work, I would say. So non-expert in this. Again, we can, there are let me reframe this a little differently. Part of how we started talking to UIC was they performed a similar project in the Little Village neighborhood after that demolition incident during the Lightfoot administration, where they had, I think, partnered with neighborhood groups to deploy these purple air sensors and use that to chart over time pollution tendencies in in that area. We could use some of those methods. We could do, I expect we could do the same type of reporting. I mean, we could try to get generate value from that, but I would just set the expectation low on the sophistication that we could do in-house.
But the data would be ours. You'd have access to the
That's my understanding. We would certainly confirm it before we 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 go spending on it. We've put put more effort into examining the the clarity side of the shop, just because that has more moving parts for us to understand before coming to you. But at this point, we're really at a a resource allocation type of question.
So I'm familiar, I'm very familiar with the Purple Air system, so ask me any questions you want, because I monitor that. There are, that's a private enterprise, right? And so you can go on, anybody in this room can go online now and look where the nodes are, and there may be some in the city. Are there?
Last I checked, there were not. There were some nearby, but
Sometimes private places, a lot of people use Purple Air because they're looking for indoor equality in their facilities, like factories or or, you know, nor or Brumman or any of those use it, but but they are all over. I do projects where we monitor the Purple Air stations in Chicago occasionally, so I know what that's about. I don't know quite the clarity node air sensors, so I'd be curious if that's a public system or if that's more of a proprietary UIC or something they've developed. I'd be interested to see what they're monitoring. I'm assuming they're monitoring PM levels.
Yeah.
And VOCs?
And VOCs and ozone.
And ozone, but probably not CO2, because I don't think Purple Air has CO2.
Use my brain as trust.
Okay, so most of these things, by the way, as far as it, they're not monitoring necessarily for climate change. I'll tell you that. They're not monitoring the gases associated with climate change. They're monitoring the gases or the chemicals or particulate matter. PM is particulate matter, meaning the small little microns, two-point-five micron-sized particulate matter, which is a health hazard. So they're looking at the health risk, not so much climate change. And so that is a different part of EPA, and I don't think there is any threat to that, by the way. I think that's got too much health and stuff like that. So I don't think federally it's going to be a problem. But if you want, the council can, anybody can go look at the Purple Air monitors that are out there. It comes up on a map where they are when you go to Purple Air website, and it's kind of fun to look at. Day to day, you'll see them fluctuating based on traffic patterns. So downtown, you'll see it go peak during rush hours and then it comes down. So and I don't know what clarity node is monitoring, so I'd like to see that. But, you know, I think I think one or two could be good. I think there's a lot of things, by the way, you're going to see that we may need down the road as they start development on Arlington Parks. That construction is going to start picking up the dust and debris, which gives you an opportunity to go back to them and say, need to get this under control, and need to put systems in place. So I'd like to see, before we make an action item on this, I know you want to move fast on this, I'd like to review option one, what it's doing. I haven't seen their systems. Invite the council if they want to look at the Purple Air system online. Just go to their website, and they'll show you all the monitors that are out there in the city and area and what they're looking at. You can bring up graphs and everything else.
Alderman Budmans.
So I think it's it's helpful to have the idea of what the the devices' costs are, but it really doesn't do me much good when I don't know what the budget associated with that is. So I'd really like you guys to come back to us and say, option number one, we're going to have a not-to-exceed budget of fifty thousand or however many sensors they think they're going to put here. And option number two, if we're going to have to analyze this data ourselves, have a budget of not to exceed thirty thousand or whatever that budget amount number is, so that at least we know what those not-to-exceed amounts are before we tell you, well, let's go with option three. Because I don't know if option three is the best option or not, but it's difficult to make a decision only based on the the cost of the devices rather than when the number of devices is necessary and the analysis cost is unknown. And with the speed that the with the speed that the new administration in Washington is moving, I mean, who knows? I mean, in four weeks, there may be an EPA, there might not be an EPA. I have no idea. But but by the time we get those numbers together, maybe we'll have we'll have more of an idea of which are the most important organizations to the new to the new administration and not.
Yeah, and I would have to agree with Alderman Budmans, because when I'm looking at the, when you talked about option number two, and you said it was going to be more of a city-led initiative, like, if it's a city-led initiative, how much more money is that going to cost us than just going with option one and having somebody else do the 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 analysis? So I think that the the pricing is it's hard to even make a decision off of these options from from that aspect as well.
I agree.
So go ahead.
If I may, to answer a couple of these questions. So Alderman Kohler is correct about Purple Air being visible. For the clarity side, I think part of the grant-funded work was to deploy a dashboard similar to the Purple Air website so that people can look at these sensor readings in Chicago. I think we'd have access to the data when we put it up. I don't know that the public-facing side would be there until twenty twenty-six or or later. Purple Air, you plug, you play, you're online now, but again, less less data being collected there. To your question, there is now one sensor in Rolling Meadows. I don't think that was true when we looked. It's an indoor sensor, so not really what we're looking for there. Alderman, you know, to to the later questions, we're in a little bit of a chicken and the egg with UIC. We've posed the question, you know, how much does this cost? And the answer is, well, how much do you have? Because you're in a bit of, it's not, it's not that bad. But, you know, you're in a bit of cutting-edge science, as it were, and the the more resolution you have, the better it gets. There's no standard for how close or how far you space these or where you put them. It especially when, you know, we have less defined objectives. Again, the whole city of Chicago is getting about two hundred, you know, anywhere between four to ten. It's it's a bit of a chicken and the egg problem. So you're talking twenty to fifty to do this all the way, do it, you know, with a high level of involvement. Purple Air, you you put a few of these out and, you know, substantially less cost, substantially less, you know, interesting research you can get out of it. If you are talking about things like Arlington Park or patterns from the tollways and things that at least give you a baseline. And we we don't like coming to you with less-defined decisions to make. This is a kind of a less-usual field for us in local government, especially local government in Illinois, to be talking about. This is usually the work of public health agencies, but again, it was in the plan, and we've been setting ourselves to trying to bring bring options to you. So I appreciate your understanding on that front.
Okay, so we're kind of all over.
I think we're asking for more information.
Yeah, I think a price break. I know I personally can't tell you up or down unless I see a pricing of what this is going to cost. I have a little trigger slowness just because things are changing so quickly of what research is continuing to be federally funded. And if this, I just don't want to put out this money, and then by the time we're going to start collecting data, there is no more project, because we're then out this money to not get the the data. If if the group would like to see more data, could we ask for this to come back? So we all in favor of those coming back to another committee of the whole with some more financial data? Or do we not want to see it again?
I'm leaning more towards three, and the only reason is, to Alderman Budmans' point, I don't know what we, okay, so we find out that it's like, what can we do as Rolling Meadows to fix the air quality along ninety, fifty-three, the industrial, like, it's good to know, but and it also might be because it's on the heels of, we need a new roof, and that's a million dollars. Then that's, there's no questions asked, we know what has to be done. So it might just been in staging of the topics in my mind, but that's a no-brainer. We need a new roof to keep City Hall going. Is this, I don't know. Okay, so we determine there's a problem. How can we fix poor air quality? And that's what I'm struggling with is, I don't have a problem approving something from a funding perspective if I know what the end result is, and I feel horrible saying that from an environmental perspective, but I don't know what we can do. If we if we allocate no greater than a hundred thousand dollars, that's great. We learn there's air quality issues. What can we do to fix it? I guess that's what I'm struggling with as a community. So that's why I have a hard time, even if staff comes back, and I don't know, it might take twenty hours of staff time to come back with these numbers. I don't know that that would change my perception.
Okay, so is there a majority who would think for now we would go with number three, option three, that we would like to? Sorry.
To table it.
To table it, right? I want to make sure it's to table this for
Until further information is available, you're saying? To answer these, to answer these questions, and there's many questions.
So so option three would be to take no action at this time. We could continue to monitor the existing market for this type of analysis and what impacts there could be or ways that we can utilize that information in the municipal would be what we're proposing as option three is the no no action. It's in the plan. We've evaluated it, brought it to council, council determined that at this time we take no action. It can continue to remain in the plan as an example, like a focal, like, just to have it something that hangs out there as a, you know, an item to monitor, but we would take it out from essentially, or we would can check it off as as completed, evaluated, and determined not to move forward. But that's what option three is. The other option would be to essentially defer this to a future date for us to bring back more information as far as budget impact.
Okay, so if you who would be in favor of option three of taking no action on this sustainability? So
Was that your hand?
Yeah, that's my hand.
Maybe it's going to die.
That's my hand. So I guess that would be our our majority objective is to take option three and take no action at this time on this part of the sustainability plan.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The monitors in Ward one. The monitors in Ward one.
Okay, so our last thing up for discussion is discussion of ordinance to modify zoning regulations concerning tobacco, vape, and CBD shops and smoking lounges, which I will defer to defer to Assistant City Manager Community Development. Glenn Cole?
Thank you. No presentation for this one. It's a very brief workshop item for you. As you recall, last year, we received direction from the council on a few different topics related to to lost my train of thought there, to tobacco, vape, and CBD regulations. As we discussed with the with the council at that time, at the committee of the whole, we brought one of those items through the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is changing the zoning rules around these establishments, both in in some sense to be more permissive, really without making them easier to locate within the city. So the the city council, you recall, in twenty twenty-three made the scent of licensing rules for these establishments, established a total numerical cap, established a cap by area, it established some operating restrictions, and, you know, it also also established a system of location buffers and background checks, right? So let's try to control the proliferation of these, knowing that the more, you know, they're opening up and they have signs for a reason because location is convenience of sales. Let's try to shape where they, you know, ultimately land. And it also gives a lot of objective criteria as well, a lot of legislative discretion for the city council on where these go. There were also, at that time, adopted by the city council some zoning rules, which requires going through a special use permit process that isn't entirely well-suited to this exercise before something could come back to the city council for consideration. Based on the discussion had by the city council, we proposed to get get rid of that zoning cycle, that zoning step, to instead have a public hearing before this body, before you choose what to do with it. Again, still keep the same restrictions and control, but if you wanted, if the city council wanted to allow this in the future, it just makes it simpler, I think, for all parties to to do that. At the same time, there was a desire expressed by the council that we heard to make a clear path for smoking lounges, so places where legally you can smoke indoors to, you know, if that was ambiguous in the zoning code, and this would at least give it a clear path, which would be a special use, which is a little more well-suited for that when you're talking about. which is a little more well-suited for that when you're talking about, um, you know, smoking and making sure you have the right separation and a little more granularity on location and, and things like that. So this ordinance does, does both. Um, we know that, you know, there was a, a split vote at the last city council meeting. We wanted to check in before the next city council meeting. There's a consensus to modify this before it is taken back up by the city council or if we can answer any questions, um, just wanted to set aside some time to do that.
No, thank you for bringing this back as, just to clarify, like, so we still have the final say, is what the intent was in 2023 when we talked about it. So I appreciate you bringing it back tonight before second reading next week. Is that the way it's currently drafted is any use of these would still have to come back before council?
Yes, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
What is the change? Why, why is it necessary?
Yeah, and, and again, this is totally up to the, to the council. We don't have a strong, um, staff recommendation. But the change is, you know, you, you come to the city council first. You, um, you, you as a body weigh in, right? You choose, you express support for this before it even goes to the planning commission or not. And if you're looking to modify that license cap or caps or not. Then you have to go back down to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You go through a process that's really made for more significant developments. Um, you have more fees involved. You have more process involved. You have more time involved. That's by the applicant as well as city staff. Um, probably about two months later, that comes back to you at the city council level. And then you would take actions about the, um, about the special use permit, about the licensing. So this, um, without eroding the city council's control, um, it would just, if there was a desire to allow such an establishment in the future, it just makes that process, um, a lot simpler for everyone. This current relocation, that's also being considered by the city council, is, is a good example of that. It's even more complicated because it's kind of coming midstream. Um, it's in a planned development. And so we think in this case, between being a relocation and a planned development, we can authorize that move without other steps. But potentially, if this was a business having to relocate, um, they'd be looking another two to three months of runway before they could do it.
Anyone else having any questions? I think we're clear. Is there anything else you needed from us?
No, just if there was any direction, we're happy to make sure it's ready for you at your next meeting. If not, just wanted to give you the, the opportunity to discuss it.
Direction, any questions?
No, I agree. Hopefully, from that business perspective too, is a, not a two or three or four-month delay if PZ doesn't meet yet. So no, thanks for the clarification.
However, if we do have the delay, then we're making sure that it's somebody who really wants to do this, somebody who's been vetted thoroughly vetted throughout this process, that they're not just setting up like a storefront with little or no financial backing as well. And we're getting the chance to make sure that they're serious and that they're really well-qualified to do this versus, uh.
Very true.
I think we're good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sign next week's council meeting agenda.
Okay, I would now like to entertain a motion to go into closed session under Section 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act regarding the purchase of lease of property. Do we have a motion?
Removed.
Alderman Ryan for the first. Alderman Budmats for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will a clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes. With five in favor and zero opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and the press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session.
I'll give the option if the council would like to stay in here. We can just remain here or we can move back into our.